Okay. Morning, everybody. If you could take your seats, please. Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the overview and scrutiny committee meeting of Northamptonshire County Council. First item on today's agenda, when I find it, will be apologies. I've had apologies from councillor Julie Davenport, no substitute, and councillor Malcolm Waters, no substitute. Any other apologies?
Through you, Chair, we have had apology. Notification to councillor Ty is substituting for councillor Waters.
Hello, Michael. Welcome. Okay. And apologies from Jonathan Ekins, councillor Ekins. Next item then, we also do apologise, we also have apologies from Susan Zeiss, the Monarchian Officer, and Sophia will be stepping in, whispering in my ear when and if she needs to. Next item, notification of requests to address the meeting. We've had a request on item six, the NCC draft budget, from Mrs Jean Lineker. I believe she wishes to speak specifically about adult social services proposal relating to the fair contribution policy. Jean, if you'd like to come forward.
No, at the start of the item, Chair.
Oh, sorry. We'll do that at the start of the item. Yeah, she knows. I don't know what's going on. Sorry, Jean, my fault. Do apologise. I'll call you shortly. In the meantime, I would like to welcome the leader of the council and the chief exec, along with the section one five one officer who are in attendance. Item three, declaration of members' interests. Silence is the reply, which is useful. Item four, then, chairman's announcements. There's no fire drill. Should the fire alarm ring continuously, please leave the building as soon as you can and keep away for at least 20 minutes or until told it's safe to return. There are a couple of other items. I believe every member has been circulated the dates of our budget challenge sessions we've got coming up. We'll be referring to this later in the work programme as well. But basically, we've got four sessions on the second, third, sixth and 10th of December. But as I said, we'll discuss the detail of that perhaps a bit further along. The only other issue that I want to raise is that I have received a letter from the commissioners. And I raise this, this is about future direction of the committee. And I don't want to, from the chair, dictate how we move forward. I think we do that quite well as a team collectively. So just to make you guys aware, they're concerned maybe about mission creep. They think we should be focusing more on, in their words, the significant financial aspects. They raised, for example, the recent work that the working groups doing on the highways contract, suggesting that maybe that wasn't financially significant. Anyway, I've met with the vice chairs. I have responded to the commissioners. And what we've said is, obviously, over the next couple of months, we're entirely going to be focused on the budget anyway. So I don't think they would have any concerns or disagreements about that. And I've suggested that perhaps myself and the vice chairs meet with them in the new year, possibly facilitated by Centre for Public Scrutiny, just so we can, you know, get a greater understanding of the way that this committee should be directed in the future. I'll send you a copy of their letter and my reply, but it's just really to make you aware of their points. We're meeting, the committees meeting, obviously, today to sort of do initial scrutiny of the draft budget. And as I'd like to welcome and thanks, leader of the council, chief exec, section one five one officer, and of course Malcolm, the finance portfolio holder. I'd suggest that where we can in our discussions, we try to keep our lines of inquiry focused, relevant to the particular issues that we're talking about, to help the meeting proceed quickly. And that brings us then to item five, minutes of the scrutiny meeting held on the 30th of October. Does the committee agree that these are a fair and accurate record? And can I sign them? I would, however, just like to give my thanks to the officers for preparing these minutes. I personally think they're a really good and accurate record. There's a lot of detail in there, and I hope that members will find this useful if and when we need to look back and refer to them. Do we agree that they're a correct record? Thank you. Okay, they're signed. Next item then, item six, overview of the draft council budget. We will, of course, be looking at more detail of some of the specific service elements of the budget. And we've already, you'll remember, prioritised some of the specific items we want to look at, and they'll be taking place in the challenge sessions that I mentioned earlier. Today's an opportunity, I think, really, just to get a wide overview of the budget. I mean, we've already had a couple of sort of briefings, so hopefully members already have an opportunity, you know, an understanding already. You will see, however, in the paperwork today, agenda item six, we've been given again a sort of briefing of some of the high notes. I don't know if anybody wants to chip in, just give us a couple of minutes, comment about the budget, and then I'll throw it open to questions. Oh, sorry. This, of course, is the opportunity to bring Mrs Lineker forward to discuss your issue on the fair funding contributions. Jean, if you can come forward, and as usual, you're allowed to speak for three minutes, and then we'll pick up anything you say in later discussions.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. On behalf of the Carers Society and Healthwatch and Carers Voice, which I'm on, please, I'm asking you for them to come on to the scrutiny again, whereas before they were on it, but they got told it wasn't to do with budgetary and they got taken off. So therefore, I'm asking you, because it concerns people, and they are the ones that see to the disabled, the Carers Society helps with partners as well as the carers. It is most important for these to be on this committee to help scrutinise and help you, the council, to either spend more money or less money. But I can assure you, I want the same when we become unitary. If and when we become unitary, I'm not agreeable to unitary at the moment myself, but it's going to happen. And when it does, I'd like you to include these people. These people matter to me. I was a carer myself. I was in care myself, and I need to know what you are doing within Northamptonshire.
Okay, thank you very much. And if I could also draw members' attention, we've had written comments from Carers Voice, specifically about the fairer contributions policy. They have been shared by email. I hope everybody's had the chance to see them. The fairer contributions policy line in the adult social services budget is basically this council hoping to achieve an extra £770,000.
Not mention we were volunteers, sorry.
Indeed, thank you. An extra £770,000 worth of income, basically by increasing the charges that we make to various client cohorts in line with national and local levels. I assume that means in line with what other councils are doing, both across the country and possibly regionally, Leicester, Nottingham, wherever. We haven't, when we prioritised the issues we looked at in the budget, we hadn't flagged that particular line up as something that we wanted to specifically look at. But given the contribution from Carers Voice, I'll leave it for members to decide if that's something we can look at. And of course, we have got an adult social services challenge session coming up.
What Mrs Lineker said might be not truly accurate of the priority of the council. I think all the councillors are very concerned about the vulnerable. But we, as a committee, are looking at the budget. And that, the impact on the line of the budget was just about the voluntary sector. So it wasn't, as the whole of a budget, it wasn't an item.
Okay.
So I don't think what Mrs Lineker said was completely accurate. It's not that we disregard it or whatever. It's because it's with voluntary organisation, and it's just that part. But to say that we do not work with them, I think it's...
Okay, thank you. I think probably Mrs Lineker's wider point, as you picked up on yourself, was about the vulnerability of local people. And I agree, I think that's something that we're all concerned about. I'd suggest we come back to this issue in a little while, because we will perhaps need to decide whether or not we need to get more detail about this particular budget line. Possibly we could do that after a contribution from chief exec, whoever. And again, I just wonder, going back to the agenda item, if anybody wants to just give a couple of minutes overview before we start asking you lots of difficult questions. Malcolm, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just open this up. I'll not say very much, because the sooner we get into the numbers, the better. This is just a general overview, as you know, and you're going to go through a lot of detail with each of the various departments. And I'm sure that a lot of information will come out there, we welcome that. I just wanted to put this in context before we start. Bear in mind that the year before this, we managed to just bring in a slight positive, i.e. under spend. This year, the period seven, we're just concluding that, and that's showing a slightly improved situation. We're currently forecasting 1.9 overspend, still five months to go, so a lot of water going to... And of course, this budget here now is showing a small contribution reserve. So you've got to look at the trend here. But I think we've still got a way to go beyond that. But it's looking like a slightly improving situation, and that's good management, in my view. This is Barry's first contribution to budgets in this city, so this county, rather. And I'm sure he'll do very well. He's picked it up incredibly quickly, as I'd expect he would. So as soon as we get on with the numbers, the better, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Matt, please.
Yeah, just to echo Malcolm's point, I think you've got to look at this budget we've got, that scrutiny are going to be looking at, in the context of the journey that we've all, as members, have been through over the last two or three years or so. And it represents progress, I think. And as I've said a number of times, it represent also honours the commitment that I, we, as members across party, you know, with everybody, have said about honouring that commitment, about doing everything we can to sort the council out as we transition towards unitary. And I think this is a big step forward. So I welcome the contribution that scrutiny will make over this. And as I said in council last week, I think we've got to put a challenge to scrutiny to do the best, the most thorough job you possibly can, given this is probably the last budget of the council. And I'll just echo that again and wish you well and look forward to getting this in whatever shape it looks like come February through council. Thank you.
Thank you. And I totally agree and echo those sentiments. We need, as a committee, to be looking into the detail of this budget, possibly more than we ever have done before. And you rightly say it's potentially the last ever budget of this county council. So, you know, it's becoming honoured to do that. Is there any more comments before? I have a couple of questions already, but if you want to chip in with any overview, chief exec.
It's really just to say, do you want us to take you through the slides? Or do you want to just ask questions? Because we're happy to do either way, whichever you prefer.
Personally, I'm probably okay to move to questions. I think we've seen some of the figures before. I think we'll do that. Sorry, Michael, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I refuse to apologise for asking awkward questions. Page 43 of the budget, please. Just the overall summary, the global picture. Two figures I'd just like an explanation of, because they strike me as being well beyond what you might call predictable rates. The first one is the inflation figure. We've got a figure of 7.08 million for the current year, and we see a figure adjoining it for next year of 17.6 million. What I'd like to note is how much of that 17.6 million is explained by the 4% payroll increase? And what is the rest explained by? And the second question goes back to fees and charges, two thirds of the way down. We are bringing in 34 million in the current year, but that goes down to 25 million next year, which again is a material reduction. I'd just like the initial comments on how those figures came about, please.
Before you answer that, can I chip in? Because I was also going to ask specifically about inflation. I don't want to sound like a stuck record, but one of the things I've been talking about is the demands on inflation, demand pressures and baselining, how they've all been forecasted. Now, clearly, the demand pressures and the baselining, we'll have the opportunity when we talk to the various directors. But the inflation, I am assuming, is taken at a sort of wide strategic financial level. And I would like to understand, like Michael, how that was calculated? What sort of formula is used? And how that compares with how other councils do or how we've done it in the past? I might come back to you with some more detail, but please, if you could pick those points.
Just a quick point on that. It's 2.87, Mike, is the inflation number. And whenever you're putting a budget together, and there's a lot of contractual stuff in there as well, but whenever you're putting a budget together, as you well know, you have to judge what inflation's going to be. And does anybody want to have a go around this table? It's not easy. If Labour government gets in, it could be a lot higher. If Brexit goes wobbly, it could be higher equally. Currently, it's a lot lower. So you make a pitch on that. But I'm going to pass over to Barry for the detail. But you've always got to bear that approach in mind when you're setting inflation. Thanks, Barry. Can I ask you this?
Just firstly, Chair, could I just check what report is being referred to?
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a fair question. I don't know if all the members have the budget in front of them. This is the draft budget that went to Cabinet on the 12th of November. And I would suggest if members don't have that in front of them, they at least dig out a copy and bring them to future meetings. And the specific page that Michael referred to is the budget summary for 2021, where we've got sort of this year's figures for reference and the overall figures for next year.
Sorry, Chair, there's so many people speaking.
Oh, don't speak when I'm speaking, please. The paperwork that's referred to is the draft budget that went to Cabinet on the 12th of November. And the page in particular is the budget summary for 2021, where we have two figures. We have this year's figures for reference and then the proposed figures for next year, just a very wide summary. So, you know, inflation, savings, we're looking at 23 million, those sort of high level figures. And in inflation for next year, we're allowing 17.6 million extra into the budget, as I'm reading it. Actually, that's not right, is it? Because inflation is, oh yeah, no, that's right, 17.7 million, yeah.
Yes, firstly, the first question that was asked, I'll try and answer that. The staff 4% pay rise is 4.4 million. We also have in there the percentage inflationary rise across our contracts. And we have many contracts, the bulk of our spend is actually in contracts. We've looked and adjusted current year inflationary figures in terms of actuals, so that next year's budget reflects what we would anticipate based on actuals of this year, with some contingency in there. But I'll ask Barry if he wants to add any more to that. And you will, when you go through, for instance, adults and children's and other areas, well, adults in place mostly, you'll be able to scrutinise the detail of those inflationary increases when you scrutinise their budgets in detail, because that's where the bulk of it will sit, apart from the staff pay rise, which is also incorporated in there. So if you deduct that out, most of the rest of it is in contractual inflationary rises.
Michael, anything?
Yeah, this is what I suspected. The 4% has got to be accounted for somewhere. So really, to get a handle on this, could somebody tell me what the current payroll figure is in the current budget? So that we can work out what the 4% is.
Again, could I just say, without having the figures in front of me of actual payroll, a 2% pay rise is 2.2 million. So for every 1%, it's 1.1 million.
So we're up to about, to be generous, say 12 million. Are we saying then the other 5 million?
No, no, sorry. The 4% equates to 4.4 million. Yeah? So deduct that from the 7.7, you've got 12.3 remaining.
Okay. So the remaining 4 million is on contract inflation, is it? Not talking about the total figure of 17 million?
Can I ask a question? I mean, I got the impression from the portfolio holder that basically we've got, was it 2.87% rise across the board, which I think is designed to include the labour cost pay rise, the staff pay rise, as well as the contracts and everything? I assumed, and one of the reasons I wanted to ask about this here, was that that was just across the whole organisation. But I think from the chief exec's comments there, there might be some differences in the individual services. Sorry, Barry, you're waiting to come in.
Yeah, so on the inflation, we have 4.4 million for a 4% pay award and 1 million for an inflation on the national living wage, which is 5.4 million. The rest is inflation across services and contracts, some of which is included in contracts. So certain contracts will have RPI and CPI clauses in. Some will be a bit more complicated with construction and fuel clauses in, especially in place. And each directorate looks at those contracts and calculates an inflation based on what is, we're contractually committed to pay. There are other areas like adult social care, when we sit down with providers and negotiate an increase. And that's normally based on either RPI or CPI, but that's actually a negotiation rather than in the contract itself.
So it isn't the case, apologies for, you know, me working it out slowly, it's not the case that we simply came to a figure of 2.87 and added that across the organisation? Each individual line has worked their own out, and it turned out it was 2.87. So yes, I need to ask specific questions to the service heads.
There's more to it than that. You end up, you start off in a budget like this, you do the calculations. The payroll figure's about 106 million, by the way, Mike. And so you then do the calculations, as has just been suggested by them. And at the end of that, when you've got all the information that is available to you, you then make a judgement. You end up having to make a judgement sooner or later. And what's going to happen with Brexit? Is the pound going to dive? Inflation will go up. You know, you still have to put some judgement into this. And I think that's been done as well as...
Yeah, and I think it's that judgement that I want to understand. But I think, having heard what we said, I need to ask them of individual...
But your judgement would be good as anybody else's. You've got to make a bit sooner or later.
Councils up and down the country will be making those sorts of judgements. This council in the past will have made those sorts of judgements. So again, it's getting a feel for how robust we think it is now. But clearly, we can't...
Better at this case, a little higher than lower price.
Okay. Cecile, you've been waiting to come in.
Yes. When we look about inflation, if you look on page 26, I think when you look at NAS Corporate, CFN, Place, Public Health, Technical and GHS, there you have very various degree of inflation, and that is what is reflected. So I was going to ask a question and what is the answer that was given? If you look, depending on the budget, the inflation is much higher in certain... And rightly so, for example, in NAS, where you have a lot of contract, you have an inflation of 6.4%, where in Public Health, you have zero. Now, I just have two questions. One is, in budget summary by directorate, we have technical. So I think technical must mean treasury, because I don't know what the technical department is in the county. And secondly, it's just a question of presentation. And I think when we say the spending review 2019, council tax, and that is page 31. In 31, we said we take 2% for precept increase, so that is 6 million.
Sorry, that's 31 of today's document, not the budget?
Yes, no, 31 of today's, well, of that.
Thank you.
It's 31.
Yeah, I mean, if members could refer to which document they are referring to...
Of today's, well, I work of today's documents. So basically, we present, we will have a net increase of 3.1 million. But the way it's presented is not very clear for everybody. Because in fact, we say that because we don't increase the standard council tax by 3%, but just by 2%, we are losing 3 million. So my view is, we increase already the council tax by 4%, and that will have been a better way of presenting. So could I have an explanation why it's presented in such a not progressive way? I think that is an opportunity missed. But as a whole, I think the paper is much clearer than it has been for four years. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. And that's, previous year's assumptions assumed that the referendum limit would be maintained at 3% rather than 2%. And clearly, that was built into the baseline assumptions for the MTFP. In reality, you're right, but the council tax is going up by 4%, but the impact is 3% because that prior 1% had been included in the baseline.
Okay.
Technical in the main is, as you say, treasury management. There's reserves and contingencies in there as well.
Okay. Sorry, Malcolm, your original question was fees and charges, wasn't it? Or your second question?
It's really just the second one. The global picture on income in the budget, going back to the draft budget, as moves from 78 to 80. But within that, you've got a very high percentage reduction, fees and charge about 25% going down from 34 million to 25 million. Can you explain, somebody explain precisely why that is?
Well, we're discussing the draft budget, so... Basically, in the draft budget that you published to Cabinet, the figure for fees and charges income this financial year was 34 million, and you're projecting an income next year of 25 million. So that's a reduction in the money that we will get from fees and charges. And I think Michael's question is, why? Yeah?
I think there's been a, I'll get a detailed response to this. But if you look at the total income line, the income has increased from 78 million to 80 million. And there has been some rebasing between assessed client contributions and fees and charges in particular.
Sorry, can you use your mic, please, Michael? Because we are being webcast.
Sorry, can you put me off now?
My question was, within that figure, the movement, the global movement from 78 to 80, there's a very high percentage move in the one line, fees and charges, where I would expect to see a healthy increase possibly, bear in mind the financial situation. But it's going down from projected 34 million this year to a projected 25 next year. And I just wonder, what's the underlying reason for that?
I think, and I will confirm this, that actually, if you looked at assessed client contributions, that's gone up by 6 million. I think there's been a transfer between the two budget heads. There's also been some kind of reduction before for income targets that weren't achieved as well in that.
Could I ask a question then? What is included in the line fees and charges? Clearly, it's not client contributions, but it must be some other things.
So there's a number of items included in the reduction. For example, we've decided to dispose of Grenden Hall, for example.
For example, we've decided to dispose of Grendon Hall for example, Grendon would have been creating an income so that income has to be removed from our income stream. However, the cost of running Grendon was higher than the income we were receiving so therefore it was a loss-making operation. However, when we close it down, we have to show that loss of income and the other line, as you know, when you balance your accounts, you show the increase because we're no longer paying more to keep it open than we were receiving in income. So there's a number, a number of those within that line along with some movement between there and assessed client contributions but where we've we've also amended where income hasn't been achieved in the past and there's been targets. For example, some of our services had income targets that couldn't be achieved and would never be achieved and there's no point in continuing to put that burden on services to make income where it cannot be achieved. And what we've done with this budget for next year is try to create a baseline that is a proper baseline with no historic baggage left from any unachieved savings or underachieved anything or unrealistic attempts at fees and charges. So the budget that goes forward into unitary is a clear, clean sheet of paper, baseline budget with no baggage from historic underachievements or unachieving income.
Okay, so I think the baseline in question is certainly what I'm going to come back to when we get to the individual challenge sessions but in response to this particular question, there are various relatively small things but the big thing is loss of income from Grendon Hall on that particular line.
And that's not substantial, that's just an example, there's a number of those. So again, when you scrutinize each of the directorates, you will see and it's clearly in the papers you have for today, in each one you will see a breakdown of their fees and charges so you'll be able to scrutinize what is each directorate's change in fees and charges and why it applies.
Okay, so somewhere there exists those lists, I suppose the danger for this committee though is to get too immersed in the detail, especially for somebody's relatively small.
Yeah, and if you aggregate all of the different ones that you'll scrutinize through each directorate, you'll come to that figure but you will see that they're clearly broken down with detail for each directorate in terms of the changes that have been impacted.
We'll have a look at that.
Okay, any other questions? Can be very short meeting if there isn't. Chris?
Thanks Chair. So question about business plans, I think we were told at one point in the run-up to this budget that business plans exist to underpin all of the savings proposals that have been put forward, is that the actual situation?
So clearly not all of the savings would require a business plan but those that involve any transformation or any service changes would require a business plan. So those plans have been through what we call and you'll see it in the slides which is why I said did you want me to take you through those initial slides? All of those business plans would be taken through robustness sessions, all of the service areas again have been through those several robustness sessions and some of the areas that are more complex, for example adults and childrens, have had more sessions than others. So those plans are until we set a final budget in February, our iterative process and are continuing to be refined where we haven't signed them off as yes, that's what we call in green. If it's green, it's fixed, it's signed off, it's been robustness tested fully. If it's amber or red, they're still work in progress. So yes, not all of the 23 would require business cases but those that do would have business cases and will continue to be challenged until we set that robust budget. But again, I would suggest that when you scrutinize with each of the directorates, you can ask which of the savings proposals have business cases and have they been signed off?
And thanks for reminding me that I mean business case, not business plan, sorry about that and that's really useful to know because I think it would really help to inform our scrutiny of individual budget lines as we come to them if those business cases can be made available to us. Can I just ask then, obviously as you said, some of those are still going through an iterative process and there's a rag rating for each one, that presumably would therefore mean that to me at any rate, there are some of the savings proposals are still going through the process of being fully worked up, is that a fair assumption to make?
Well, as you know, this is a draft budget and you don't put out a draft budget and you don't consult on it if it's the finished product because that would defeat the purpose of consultation and calling it a draft. So it's currently a draft budget that will be finalized when all of the consultation feedback comes back, when we continue to work through the proposals and make sure that they are all completely deliverable and fit for purpose and that's the same every year in a normal council that you would go through that process. Your final budget never looks exactly the same as your draft budget, I'd be amazed if it did, that'd be the first time ever in my experience. So yes, you know, not everything is 100%. A lot of the main figures in the budget won't change but within that 23 million, obviously some of those areas are out of consultation at the moment and I would expect some of those to change because of the consultation feedback that we would expect to get.
Can I just add to that, Mick, that productivity improvements don't start and finish on April the 1st, this is a continuum, it started 18 months ago and it carries on and it should carry on all the way through next year as well and into the unitary. We should always. Very pleasant, thank you.
Pretty music.
And this will it's a continuum, it should be these sort of processes and so you end up at any point in time, there should be a number of these projects, even when we go into unitary, we should still be fighting to get productivity into the councils, never-ending process.
Chris? So yes, what I think what would really help is if a document exists that lists the business cases with their rag rating, it would help if that was made available to us so that we can get an understanding of where you are in your assessment of the various business cases and see which ones are still going through an iterative process and which ones are currently fully worked up and ready to go.
Whilst it's a work in progress and it's an operational piece of work, I wouldn't be publishing that however, as we get further down into our budget analysis and our budget process, all of them will be in green by February or they won't be put into a budget so that's the assumption you can make. However, we've had more time to prepare for this year which is why we're having more robustness sessions so that we're more comfortable that the budget we set in February is 100% deliverable. And if you recall last year, just to cast people's minds back in terms of this is not a normal council and sometimes I feel I have to remind people of that, I know that every single day but I have to remind other people sometimes. This time last year when we set a budget for this current year, we were still balancing last year's budget, we had a stabilization plan, we had a target of 64.2 million to deliver and we were still developing plans to deliver that budget at this time last year. We were also setting the budget for the following year. So this year's budget didn't get sufficient time and robustness as you would in a normal council to set the budget. So therefore we've tracked this year's savings and that's in the public domain, it's published every month in terms of our red, amber, green achievements against that budget delivery which you get to see. And next year, what we would anticipate, because we've had more time this year to do what I would consider to be more robust business cases and to challenge those business cases, you would see a different tracking system next year, less red on it, I would certainly hope, in fact I'd be much more confident to be less red on it next year. But this year has been probably the most difficult year from my experience and people would assume that last year with a target of 64.2 million, we would have had a real challenge and we did, you know, I'm not trying to underestimate the challenge but actually in year this year has been the greatest challenge that we've had and that's why we're still projecting a slight overspend now but it is, you know, we're not we're not far enough in the year to feel comfortable about that yet in my view and it is very challenging. So next year I would expect all business cases to be green by the time we go into next year, so back to your original question. And whilst they're a work in progress, they're not something that we would be sharing because they could change tomorrow and it might give out the wrong information, it might confuse things and it may mislead people into what we're trying to achieve. So until they get signed off and they are green and they go into a budget as a fixed budget, they're a work in progress.
I think it's not unreasonable for us to assume that some of these individual saving lines are not yet fully worked out and I take the point about the robustness sessions and it's good to hear that those are going on and yes, until they become green at the end of those, I think we can understand that. I guess one of the problems for this committee is this time last year, we looked at various items in the budget and were told that they weren't yet fully defined, they weren't fully worked out and actually by the time we came to setting the budget, I mean it sort of turned out, didn't it, that some of them didn't come about. So it's going to be a challenge for this committee to convince itself that these robustness challenge sessions are doing the job if some of them don't turn green perhaps until after we finish scrutinizing or just before it goes to full council in February.
Just help maybe with that and what I would suggest is when you scrutinize each individual directorate and maybe this will help with your question as well, councillor Stambro, is you ask each of the exec directors which of their savings are still being worked through to final business case and then you can scrutinize those ones particularly because they won't have been finalized and you know, challenge, I'm suggesting to you that you challenge what areas are still outstanding in those particular savings areas and bearing in mind the savings for next year are half of the savings that we have in this current year and they're not all down to, you know, there's they're mostly what I would consider to be either some business as usual or some transformation but they're certainly sufficient in there for you to scrutinize when you meet with each of them and ask which has worked through.
I think we with respect, I think we also need to challenge the ones that are complete, that are green for us to understand and believe that they are have been dealt with robustly enough and I make no apologies for sort of trying to this committee to try and second-guess if you like or look at the work that the various directors have done. Cecile?
Yes, I might have an advantage because I'm also on the audit committee and if you read the audit committee paper, you would see that last year a great effort was put for the robustness of the financial, how people do their budget and the team and it's tomorrow at meetings so if you want to all come, see what is because basically all the finance that we have, all the budget we have in front of us, everybody will be responsible for their budget and will be answerable for their budget so which wasn't the case maybe two or three years ago. So I am a bit more reassured and if you look at the audit, they still say that there is some weaknesses but as a rule, the financial team and in the team, they understand much more the financial pressure and so when we scrutinize, we should have better answer and maybe easier task than to see if the budget is deliverable or not because that is what we have to do to make sure that the budget is deliverable, not the way we spend but it is deliverable.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jim?
Thank you Chair. My question's on page 20 of today's papers, in doing the draft budget, you've got the impact of the LGSS review. We haven't, as far as I know, had any details of that review or what impacts are so it's very difficult to see, you know, what impact that might have. And if, I mean if you could tell us a bit about that but also when we get down to the different directorates and we're scrutinizing those individual ones, I'm not sure whether LGSS is across all directorates or whether it's under corporate because obviously it's involved with say collecting monies for adults or childrens etc. So there might be an implication across all budgets, thank you.
There was a paper went to the joint committee on the future of LGSS on the 31st of October and it was in pink because there is a massive staffing impact that is inherent in whatever is proposed for LGSS. At the moment, LGSS, vast majority of the people work for Northamptonshire County Council although there is an agreement in place where they can work across the three councils. I think it's no secret that we want to reparate those staff back into Northamptonshire and have our own back office services which would be managed by ourselves rather than LGSS. However, as I said, there's a lot of work to be done on assessing the impact of that disaggregation and especially being sensitive about staffing implications that may come out of that. I have not assumed anything in the budget about LGSS review so there's nothing in there that either increases or decreases a budget on the back of the review because as I say, that model needs to be disaggregated very carefully and the impacts assessed. That is due to go back to the joint committee next year, next calendar year and then we'll have to bring it back to cabinet and full council for a decision because it was established by cabinet and council and at that point you will be able to see the full impact and what's been proposed.
And perhaps I can ask Chair, we it does say in the papers that because that meeting was the 31st of October that there will be another meeting of the scrutiny group, I don't know if that's been arranged or not.
It's a good question, we don't, if I understand it correctly, we don't yet know the outcome of the joint committee's final decision or recommendation but listening to what's been said there, potentially it could have an impact on this committee's work and possibly we won't need to be doing LGS scrutiny in future or at least in the same way but I mean until we know the details of what that joint committee have decided, I guess that's it. I've got an understanding of that, yeah?
What I meant was that one of our working groups is the, we keep one of our working groups aside for that but we haven't met for some to all.
We haven't because we've been waiting for the joint committee to finalize their decision or recommendation rather and it may be, you're right, that that our joint committee, there'll be no need for that working group potentially but we'll have to wait and see I think.
Matt?
Just to add on that very briefly Chair, it has been an incredible amount of work and effort to get to this point with the the impact of, well, the whole LGSS review so it's it's been a very long drawn-out process that both Malcolm and I have been involved in and we look forward to getting that through the joint committee and then we can bring it to council as has been said to move it on because it was it was one of the first things that I asked the chief exec to look into to, we've got some concerns on LGSS and we need to look at addressing those concerns but it's been a very long drawn-out process.
Yeah, I think it's difficult for scrutiny to comment because we don't yet know what the plans are but it's certainly something for the future. Could I come back to the 2021 budget? I understand you've got your robustness challenge sessions or your individual directors are trying to change things from red amber into green so they'll be finalized for the budget. Is there any specific thing that this committee can do, you know, looking at your sort of wider overview, are there any aspects of the individual budget that you feel this committee could help the directors in their robustness sessions?
I think looking at the history of this organization in terms of its budgets, I think scrutiny has a very important role to play in scrutinizing the what may be the final year of this council and if you look across, I think it's a very, very prudent budget, I think it's a very, a very good budget compared to the rest of the country even, I would go so far as to say. We're taking a very careful approach to how we've managed both savings but also investment. So for example, there's and has been an ambition not just from ourselves here but also from the commissioners to create some headroom in reserves because as you know, when I arrived here, we had no reserves and by the end of the next financial year, if we deliver this budget, we would be left with potentially around 40 million pounds of reserves going into unitary and that is not a place we thought we would find ourselves, you know, 18 months ago or just not long before that. So I mean that does include earmarked reserves so that is the total you'll see on your papers. Also, we're trying to make sure that staff and you know, I would never try and Also, we're trying to make sure that staff, and you know, I would never try and say that 4% pay rise for staff is something to be totally celebrated. I'm really pleased we were able to do that. But I also recognise that staff haven't had a pay rise for a very long time. And it only goes some way towards giving staff some recognition and reward that I absolutely believe they deserve. And, you know, if it was, if it could be more, I would want to make it more than that. But we have to be realistic and prudent about what we do. What we have tried to do, as I said, is prepare a budget that would take us into unitary in a safe way. So if you consider when we go into unitary, the districts and borough councils have been paying their pay rises, have been giving staff incremental pay rises. And we will have to rationalise all of the staffing so that everybody has equal, equal pay, equal. Otherwise, we would have equal pay claims. But actually, it's fair and right that staff have equality when they move into that new unitary. And that means that we have to allow for that in those unitaries. There will have to be parity created. So what we're trying to do is move as close to that as possible so that burden doesn't fall on the unitaries when we get into the unitary position. We've also, as I said earlier, tried to go back and baseline any of the negativity that, you know, things that haven't been possible to be achieved. And year on year, we keep asking people to still try and do the same thing that isn't achievable and that is just foolhardy. So we've tried to make sure that everything is baseline to a practical, realistic level. Also, you know, we have some contingency in there and that's very, very important because we only need a 0.1% movement in our budget to cost us £2 million. So that's a very small movement in any budget and you need to have a contingency because you cannot predict something that may happen in year, especially with Brexit on the horizon and things like that. We need to make sure that next year, we have flexibility to make sure that it's not a difficult year to balance. Because we will have to turn our efforts to the two unitaries next year. So this budget needs to be a budget that is deliverable in an easy sense, I suppose. So what I'd be saying to you is, it is a good budget, it's a prudent budget, but it still needs very good scrutiny in terms of the proposals that are in there. Not just the savings proposals, I would go beyond that and say also the investment proposals to make sure that we're investing in the right things as well. And one of the figures you will see in there is a reinvestment into services. And that's an amount that we've put in and we're currently working up business cases for a number of services to reinvest. So for example, if you take our emergency planning service, it's been stripped to the bone. And, you know, it cannot function as, what would I say, lean as it currently is. I use that word loosely because it is extremely lean. So we need to reinvest into that service and build that service back up, not just because it needs to be sufficiently robust to go into two unitaries, but actually we need a decent emergency planning team as a county here in the first place. So that's one of the areas we're looking at investment into. One of the other areas we'd look at investment into is trading standards. Again, an area that has a lack of resources in my view. It needs additional resources, not because of Brexit and they will have a key role to play. But even without Brexit, without unitaries, we need to invest in our trading standards because it's actually too lean, in my view, to deliver the services it needs to deliver. So there's areas like that I would suggest as well, you might want to look at in terms of our proposals for investment as well as our proposals for savings.
Okay, thank you. I suppose my original question was perhaps foolish and unfair. I was trying to find out if you had any particular concerns. I totally agree, investment for services and baselining is something that when we get into our challenge sessions, I absolutely want to sort of drill down into a little more. I have a couple of speakers, but you did mention reserves. I wondered if you could, I mean, I'm presuming the £40 million here isn't the ideal figure. I wondered if we could have a view from any of you at the top there, what you think an organisation of this size should ideally have in reserves. Matt?
I think Malcolm has expressed that view quite a number of times. It's circa around £100 million, basically, for a large Shire county. And that's what, if you look across the board, the likes of Hampshire, I know, had something like £300 million and all sorts of revenue streams that were coming in. So, you know, to aspire to finish the life here with £40, £45 million, given where we were 12, 18 months ago is quite an achievement, I would say. And it also pushes the challenge back on to the districts and boroughs to make sure that whilst we're working really, really hard to leave a legacy with, you know, all the finances in the best place possible and a significant amount of reserves compared to what we did have, that the districts and boroughs aren't spending them, you know, inappropriately, shall I say?
Not a job for this committee, but I take the point. And I didn't see any disagreement with the £100 million figure that was sort of raised there. Michael and then I've got Cecile.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to the overall context we're operating in. I think we would all acknowledge that most of what I would call the heavy lifting has already been done, painful it has been. We've got targeted savings next year of £23.2 million, which is in itself an ask. However, by comparison with the £43 million which we've got in the current year, that is a considerable reduction. So it should make life a little easier for us. What I haven't got, and perhaps you can help me here, is a handle on the extent to which we've brought in the £43. whatever million savings this year. I'm not talking about the overspend, projected small overspend, but of the £43 million projected budgeted savings across all the directorates, how do things stand at the moment in terms of how much or how many of those £43 million will actually be brought in?
So I'll answer that in two parts, if I may. So not all of the £43 million would be down to transformation or savings as we go back to the business cases. So of the £43 that would be considered transformation or business cases, we have around 86% of those currently delivered. So I think £31.2 million of those is in the bank as we sit here today. I think that's the figure I picked up on Monday and Barry may be able to add more. He's frantically looking up the figures here. But I know as of Monday, of our transformation savings, £31.2 million was in the bank as of Monday.
Could you confirm then that of the remaining £12 million, which is not in the bank, the vast bulk of that is in children's services?
No, that's not actually correct because, and again, I need to maybe bust some myths around children's services savings. They have delivered some savings this year. They're continuing to deliver some savings against the original targets that were set. And I would anticipate that we will come out with, you know, at least a couple of million pound savings from children's, more than we expected when we hit a crisis, let's say, at the early part of the year. And we're working with the new team that's in place now. And I have to say, they are really, really a strong, positive team who are doing their absolute best to bring in more savings in year. And also, that's why I would be more confident about next year's savings and how they've been formulated around children's services. And we have kept the savings for children's next year to a minimum, if you like. So it's about £4 million savings. On a budget of that size, that's quite a low figure. But they are realistic and you will get your opportunity to scrutinise how realistic and how achievable they are in detail. And I would welcome that scrutiny, to be honest, because we've certainly challenged them strongly. And in year, children's, some of the issues that we've had with overspending in areas has been more of an issue than an underachievement in savings, if we're talking about in year. However, we've started to see that trajectory now go in the other direction. And month on month, we're seeing a reduction in that overspend. And you'll see that again in the next monitoring report that's published for December. You'll see a continuing reduction in those overspends.
Could I just have a touch on that one as well? I've pulled my mic up a bit here because you're looking at the savings part, I'll answer two questions here. Looking at the savings part, what you should be looking at is the bottom line where there's actually an increase in spending of £30 million. It goes from 617 to 647. And so I would come back to your previous question, Mick, is let's say we go back to our 2.87 and let's say we're wrong on that, let's say we're wrong by 1%. Well, 1% of 600 million is 6 million, of course. So that's a saving, that's just a reality. So I would suggest to you, when you come to your committee, do look at the pressures line. Argue about the inflation line, it won't get anywhere because we don't know. But that's an area because if indeed the extra £50 million required of spend is not real, real, doesn't happen, then that...
Yeah, you see the point. Totally agree. And I've said before, the £51.7 million, which is inflation, demand forecasting and baselining, is just as important, if not more important, than the individual savings. And absolutely, we will be looking at that, I'm sure. Cecile?
Chief Exec has replied to a lot of questions I was going to ask. But for our leader, because he has gone through two years with the chief exec, how is he confident? Is he feeling better? Because I know from Matt well enough. And if he has his insurance, if we have his insurance that it is going in the direction that he is feeling better, it will mean a lot for me. Thank you.
Okay, well, I have to be very careful with the words we choose. As I said at the start, I think where we are now represents a significant amount of progress. And a lot of that is down to the chief exec and the people that have been brought in. You know, we want the best, the best people in this organisation and we shouldn't settle for anything less, frankly. If we want to come out the other end of this journey in a reasonable shape to honour all those commitments. So I think, I am, to use one of Malcolm's terms, cautiously optimistic that we're going to do what we set out to achieve, which will be quite a remarkable achievement, given where we started. So that is where I am. Thank you.
I think one of my questions earlier was going to be how confident are you as a team about the robustness of the budget? But clearly you are. The only thing I would say to that is like this committee, please keep an open mind. You know, don't just buy into something because you want it to be true. I'm sure there are challenges ahead. And Theresa, you wanted to reply?
If I may, it feels like I've been here two years, but I've only been here 17 months. I had to count. Just to mention again, maybe to reassure Michael again on children's. Actually, last year, children's came in £3 million underspent. So, you know, we're not giving up on it and I wouldn't want you to think we are, you know, we're going to accept overspends or non-delivery. We are still working really hard to try and pull that back and balance it in a safe way without any risk. But we have invested heavily in children's this year as well and rightly so. And I stand behind every penny of investment we've made. And this time, from this time this year to last year, we're probably spending about £10 million more than we were. But that's gone to frontline and it's gone into reinvesting in services and staff where we needed them, where we believed, like other services across the council, there wasn't sufficient resource to deliver outcomes. And we've seen a really, really good improvement just in the last two months. And I know councillor Perry gets the statistics and will have seen that over the last couple of weeks in terms of our unallocated numbers, in terms of some of our performance has improved quite dramatically, I would say, over the last six weeks. And that's down to people, in my view, and, you know, people doing the right things and getting the right outcomes.
Can I just add one little caveat to the statement I just made? And that is that nobody's under any illusion that we've got an incredible challenge still to finish this year and of course, next year to deliver these £23 million worth of savings and bring the services up to scratch along the lines of what Theresa was mentioned around things like, you know, the services that need investment that have been stripped out. So nobody in, certainly in our cabinet team and I know with the officer team, is under any illusion that we've still got a long way to go and it's, we've got to keep very much focused. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask two questions? One is about our preparedness for the two unitaries. And as the chief executive has also already alluded to that, can I ask about the reserves that we have and also our assets and investments? Will they be split equally between the two unitaries or will Northampton as the county town receive the lion's share? That's my first question. And the second one, in year scrutiny of the budget, we've already talked about fiscal resilience post Brexit, whatever happens there, if, you know, if it does happen. But when you go to the LGA website, there is a reference to local community resilience and the local hub. And I'm just wondering about, after what you described earlier on, Theresa, about the beefing up our response and our resilience there, is there any additional investment already earmarked for a community hub in response to any events that emerge post Brexit?
Chair, if I may, I'll do my best to answer that. I wish I could answer your first question. We're currently in the design and what we call design and discovery phase of unitary. We don't go into implementation phase until after the elections in May and quite rightly because the new regimes need to be in place to do that implementation and to sign off those blueprints for two new organisations and what they should look like for those people who will actually run those. So the new leaders of the council, the new cabinets of those councils should have that responsibility to implement and will want to put their own stamp on it anyway. So we're currently in design and discovery phase, which means that we're doing what we call disaggregation of the county council, which is looking at all the county council's assets, liabilities and budgets and how they're applied and aggregation for the districts and boroughs. So that's bringing together of all of their services and budgets. We've looked at all of the service areas individually within the council to see how they would split because you just can't split them on a down the middle basis because you have different populations, different needs, different demands. So they have been designed around principles that still have to be agreed and signed off by the elected representatives of both the north and the west, and that hasn't happened yet. And it made me smile slightly because I think we'll have no difficulty disaggregating assets. It's the difficulty will come when we try to disaggregate the liabilities. So I'm really looking forward to those macinges in the spring, which is when I think that will then have to happen. And that's probably going to be one of the most challenging aspects of making progress. You know, there's clear, obvious things that, you know, you would split in terms of assets. So you wouldn't give a bridge that's in the north as an asset to the west, you know. So we have a lot of assets, but they're not obvious as you might think. So a bridge is an asset, for example. It's also a liability because you have to keep it repaired. But we have to even get down to the detail of that's considered an asset and has to be split. There are some ones that are really tricky and you'd say, well, should they be owned collectively across the two? Because actually, they're a county asset and they will bring benefit to the whole county and that benefit should be split as well as the ownership of the asset. And that's for debate and discussions with politicians, not with officers. We can just put up the facts to the politicians and say, here's the facts and what it looks like. It will be political decisions around how that actually is designed ultimately. Oh, and your second question around community hub and Brexit. So we have had some government funding already, districts and boroughs and the county. And that's gone into doing quite a lot of planning around how we would manage any emergencies or any challenges we might have. We have very robust plans in place. And it's calmed down a little, obviously, for the last few weeks. But prior to that, when it looked like a deal was going through, we had daily phone calls collectively, not just here for the county, but actually regionally and nationally as well. So we're connected in at every single level, right up to the minister, actually, right up to the secretary of state and phone calls. So we're very clear about what planning, we've done all of our own estimations on what we think any of the challenges might be. And we've looked at how we might fund any contingencies, bearing in mind the government have said any direct impact that we can evidence would be funded. So we're making sure that we have measures in place that could directly evidence. However, we've been working with districts and boroughs who are closer out there in the communities on how any impact on communities would be dealt with. And, you know, we would have concerns... And, you know, we would have concerns like, well, what if? We've done all the what-if scenarios, and I don't want to, you know, create any hysteria. But, you know, we have to do the what-if scenarios. What if there was a fuel shortage, for example? You know, we need people to go out to look after our elderly. So we have to have contingencies in place to make sure that our care workers get fuel. We have to make sure that we have plans in place where people in districts and boroughs can get out to people that we can't get to. So we've thought about all of those things. We've done all the what-if scenarios and looked at what contingency you would have in place. The funding that's currently been put in place, we haven't used all of that funding, but we've used some of it to set up a proper control room so that we'd be able to manage the process, and again, put some resource into our emergency planning team, which was desperately needed, to be able to manage that across the piece. But, you know, we have tested every scenario that you can possibly think. And we've also attended scenario planning with the police that they've done, so that we understand exactly what they're planning. So we're not duplicating, but that we're carefully overlapping with their activity as well.
Thank you. Any supplementary?
It's not a supplementary. I suppose, yes, it is. But it's about... Thank you for that very full answer. I would like to see a little bit more detail of the plan. I know that we have, that online, that there is something, and there are, there is a template for councils such as ours. But it would be nice to see a little, to have a bit more detail shared. And also, but I do get the thing about not raising an alarm and making people worried unnecessarily. But I think people are aware and do request some reassurance as well.
Chair, if I may. We had a Brexit session for our members, and we gave quite a lot of the detail there. And I'm very happy to arrange another Brexit session for members when we have some more certainty around Brexit, and if, when crystal ball, I don't know, might happen. But as soon as we do, I'm very happy to get that into the diary, and hopefully, we'll get a good turnout for that.
I'm sure you would.
I'm hoping so, better than previously. So that would be really good.
That Brexit session for members gave me my favourite ever Brexit quote from the guy presenting it, saying Brexit could mean anything from the complete destruction of the UK to free unicorns for every family. Oh, that's brilliant. Chris, and then I've got a couple of questions myself, and then unless people have got something else, I'll try and start to wind this up. But do have a think if you've got any final questions. Chris.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask about something in the section in today's papers, page 33, Council Tax Assumptions 2021. It's not particularly challenging question, I think. So we've got two things we're being told about, which is an annual growth in the tax base of 2.25%, and the budget papers tell us that's based on historical trends, and that the collection fund surplus is currently set at £5 billion. There's a risk around that until we've got figures from the districts and boroughs, which we're expecting in November. So the question is, have we had those figures? And if not, when do we expect them all to be in? And will they impact on both our tax base assumption and also our collection fund assumption?
We've sat down with districts and boroughs last week. Statistically, that calculation has to be made by 21st of January of each year, so we keep asking for it earlier and earlier. We've agreed that we'll go for the figure in December. And you will notice that in the reserves position, I've set aside a £2 million reserve for volatility on the resource base. So I've set £2 million aside just to cover off any chance that that might swing either way.
So just confirming, then, I think we're not really expecting to get the figures in November, but maybe in December, but certainly by 21st of January, absolute latest. Is that right?
Statistically, Chair, they have to be delivered by 21st of January. Obviously, the earlier we ask for them, the more they can have a chance to swing. So I'd rather get a more robust picture in December than to get an early picture in November.
Okay. Maybe the committee could be informed as soon as that happens. Okay. Just a couple of things. In the discussions, we've spoken about transformation, about the move to unitary, although, of course, this budget isn't directly linked to unitary. We'd be foolish not to recognise that it is there. And also about reserves. So I just want to ask, on the budget robustness page of your presentation that you referred to earlier, a couple of questions. First of all, input from specialists, SIPF and people too. Am I right in thinking that as part of our challenge sessions, we will have access to those reports that they've given? And really, on the bottom part of that page, the districts and boroughs have been engaged on a number of things, and it talks specifically about the transformation and budget robustness boards. Could I just ask, because, you know, while we've got you here to look at the wider view, the relationship between the boroughs and the districts, these conversations that are happening, I mean, clearly, you're going to say it's all to the good. But is there anything specifically useful that has come out of there, perhaps, that we haven't in the past had?
Yeah, I would, you would expect me to say it's good, but it is really good. And I can say that hand on heart. You know, the relationship with the other seven chief executives is, you know, superb, I'd go so far as to say.
I have got half an eye on the deputy leader of one of the, oh, sorry, ex-deputy leader of one of the districts. Sorry, carry on.
Yeah, I can say that. And we're working really, really closely on delivering the new unitaries through the distributed leadership model. And that's working really well. And all chief execs are working very hard to deliver their piece of that outcome, their portfolio. It's been very important that they were involved in the process because of the fact that they're leading on portfolios that are shaping the new services, without understanding what's happening next year within those services. It's difficult for them to do design workshops, for example, because some of that will shift in the next year, in terms of what we're doing as delivery here as a county council, and then what it looks like as it goes into unitary. So actually, it was imperative that they be involved in the process. And also, it was about learning what we do, because districts and boroughs do different things than we do. So they have been on a really steep learning curve, and I have to say, they've been really dedicated to that. So, you know, I take an example of Liz Elliott from Wellingborough around children's, that's her portfolio. She's had a massive amount of involvement over the last four months in all of the shaping of our children's work. She's given her voice, she's given a view, she has a financial background, so that's been really useful. We've taken her advice on things. It's not just about being at the table, it's about actually participating actively and being listened to. And I've certainly welcomed all of them. And you'll see them all here, they've all got a pass into the building now, you will see them roaming around this building, and we're working really collaboratively across the piece. And they have attended the robustness sessions and given quite a challenge back as well, as you would expect. And, you know, as chief execs in their own right, they have a clear view about things. So we welcome that challenge, and they've added value. And if they weren't, they're adding value, they would know that, and I would know that. But actually, they're there because they're adding value, and they want to be there.
That's reassuring to hear. And dare I say, for members who are thinking of standing for unitary, there's some lessons to be learnt about the learning curve, both from county and district. Councillor Goldby.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just sort of give a political perspective on that question as well. And I've worked extremely hard on trying to build those bridges and relationships, given where we were, you know, a couple of years ago. We weren't in a great place, frankly, with the trust and, you know, and the view of the county council, given the issues and the history. But we've worked really, really hard, and that, I would like to think, is bearing fruit now. Not without its challenge, I would say. You know, we've had a few bumps in the road over the last couple of years. And we do have challenge in some of the sessions we are having, you know, on local government reform. But a part of that, I would say, is the right thing to do and the right thing to challenge on some of the issues that we're dealing with, because everybody wants to set these unitaries up in the best, in the best shape they possibly can. And that is a collective will, if you like. And one of the things I try to do is reaffirm and reassure district and borough leaders that everything we're doing here around our budgets and the whole transformation is to try and put, you know, the county council in the best shape and best place possible as we move through, and we're trying to achieve and do that together. And my view of what Theresa described in terms of that collective integrated approach with the ownership by the different district and borough leader, chief execs, I see is a really good way of getting that understanding of our roles and the statutory stuff that we provide and do here. And I think it's working pretty well. But obviously, the whole local government reform programme isn't going to be without its challenge, and it's not. But the relationships are in a good place, and we, you know, we all want the same thing. We want to move things forward.
Thank you very much. Last chance, any questions? In that case, I would like to thank the four of you for attending. I think it's been a useful session. It gives us a good stepping stone into our real work, which will be with the individual challenge sessions. Thank you again for attending, especially Chief Exec. I understand you're missing an important meeting for being here, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
It's the districts and boroughs, basically, with the chief execs, and I'm sure they'll understand.
Yeah, not that important, then. Thank you. That was a joke. That was a joke. Okay. Thank you very much. And committee, that then brings us on to... Oh, sorry, James.
Through you, Chair. In terms of potential outcomes from that session, I picked up a couple of possible points of further information. So the committee being asked to be informed when the district and borough council collection fund position was confirmed to the council. And was the committee still seeking an explanation of what was included in the fees and charges line on the, from the budget summary? This was earlier in the discussion, councillor Clark's point, or was that answered during discussion?
I don't think it was specifically answered.
How do you get from 34 to 25, basically?
Presumably, there is a document with those dozen or so items. So if there is, it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask.
If I understood correctly, Chair, then the answer to that was that the change in the figure reflects the aggregation of separate changes to fees and charges in each of the directorate budgets?
I think so.
Is there a document, we've got some PDO of how you get them, basically?
Even if it needs to be copied and pasted from different directorates. I've been asking.
Which are the putting directors?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, James, carry on.
Sorry, Chair. And then this may just be something that doesn't require a resolution, but there seemed to be a theme emerging from the discussion, that reinforced the aim already expressed by overview and scrutiny of scrutinising proposed investments in the draft budget, not just proposed savings.
Absolutely.
And the Chief Executive made the point about scrutiny picking up in its lines of inquiry, the question of which business cases for directorate savings proposals had been signed off, had been green rated, and which hadn't been.
Yeah, I think even if she's not willing for confidentiality reasons or whatever to share the details until they're finished, I think we need at least to know whether they're green, amber, red.
So this wasn't so much the case of, can we have a list of green, amber and red, so much as when you get to the directorate sessions, okay, director, what is the position? Which of these savings you're presented have been signed off, which haven't been? And that informing the scrutiny?
Yes, and it would be worth giving notice to the directors that that's an interest of scrutiny, so they come half prepared, at the very least. We also, I've got Cecile, but we also need, do you remember at the top of the meeting, we've got Mrs. Lineker's comment, and also the comments that we've received from the charity about the fair funding contributions? I'd be happy for that also to be included in the work of the adult social services challenge session, just really to get an understanding of exactly what it is. I mean, in particular, I'd like to know evidence of how it works elsewhere. I mean, they're quoting national and regional figures, so I'd like some proof of that. But I don't know what committee feels. You okay with that to be added on? Cecile.
Yes. When...